Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't we start by the introduction? This session is being audio recorded, just like every other P and Z meeting. Please be advised that today we're also recording the video as well. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting, and will keep video of themselves on throughout the meeting. During public hearings, all normal rules, including starting and stating and spelling your name apply. And lastly, members of the public may only speak during an open public hearing, but I don't believe we have a public hearing tonight. So the call, the roll call, we have seven commissioners present. So why don't we start with the reading and approval of minutes? Special meeting minutes of October 18th. That was the election of a chairman. Anybody have anything on that? Do we hear a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes.
Or whoever is speaking.
Any further discussion? Signify approval by raising your hand.
I just need a second, so I'm gonna have Mark make the motion. Adam, I'll make you second.
Yep. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion approved. Moving on to the regular meeting minutes of October 18th. Hear any corrections on that? Somebody like to make a motion to approve?
Sure, I make a motion that we approve the regularly, the regular meeting minutes.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion approved.
Before we go into the public communications, David had asked me to add something to the agenda. Did you still want to do that, David?
Yes, please.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is add item 6B5, which is the appointment of Alice to the Affordable Housing subcommittee or committee, because it's not a subcommittee, it's a committee. So we'll add that in as 6B5.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Well, I can't make a motion, so I'll need a commissioner to do so. So David, since you were the one who suggested it, I'll make you move that.
Yes, so moved.
Thanks, and then a second.
Second.
Thanks.
Okay, discussion and approval. Okay, added 6B5 to the agenda. All right, so tonight. There's no public hearings, so 5B. Discussion and decision, application number 52-21SP and 53-21C, Paul Samansky for Arthur Howland for North Main Street LLC, Zero North Main Street, map three, block 15, lot five, Prose Conservation Development of 13 acres.
And I'd like to make an administrative change. It's, it's my era. I've been changing it, but it hasn't been consistently changed. It's North Main Kent LLC and not North Main Street LLC.
Okay, does that, is that follow through on all of the correspondence?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so as you all know, we must act on this application tonight. So with that, I suggest that we get right into it and starting with the draft resolution for approval.
Question, Wes, there's an agenda item under 5B1 that says Alt SP Hicks Request. And it's a site plan version, but I don't remember seeing this before. I'm not sure what.
That, that site plan was given at the last public hearing. Paul Samansky went over that as explaining that we couldn't really practically do that, that's where that came from.
Okay.
Right. I did go out today and I, and I walked that area. And I will attest that that is extremely steep going down into that, that area. A, a road would be practically impossible to put in. So we, we had asked as a commission that they at least, you know, exercise or at least look at that. And, and that was what that site plan was about. So Donna has, of course, done a very good job as usual in, in summarizing this. And I think I'd like to start with, with going through the resolution of approval that she's done. There's a list of, of what it contains. There's, there's a great deal of information. We've all heard it. We've gone through it. And then there's a list of conditions by which we might approve this. So I don't know that we need to go through that number one, which is, is the list of all the information. I think it's well documented. It's all there. We've heard it. Item number two. The and, and three are things that have to be done prior to a, a zoning permit being issued. I think this is basically boilerplate the Aquarian and WCA. And also DEEP. And then Donna, what, a number five, would you, would you illuminate on that? Prior to the issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance, proof of additional test pits were conducted during construction.
And that was actually a requirement that was made by Denise Lord at Anchor on our Barton Lugacy, whatever their name is now, I, I'll consider them anchor because it's just easier to say. That was one of the things that she had addressed in her last letter. So I put that in as a condition of approval.
Okay. So and number six, that no gutters to be installed on each structure, but rather stone drip edges. I assume that was a something that the applicant had offered.
Yes, it was.
Yep. Is there a reason that we want that as, as a condition of approval? Does it matter to the commission whether they have gutters, they don't have gutters?
Well, I think it goes to the matter of stormwater runoff.
Okay.
So by not having the gutter, you're gonna have a drip edge that's gonna go into a gravel area. So therefore, it's gonna slow down the infiltration. If you have, you know, two gutters coming down, it's gonna gush. So that was something that Mr. Samansky had volunteered. So that's why that's in there.
Well, if you have gutters, you have downspouts and you, and you have underground leaders that have to go to somewhere. Now, the, the homeowners association. I think we had talked about that, Donna, are you satisfied that, that we have all the documentation on that?
Well, this is something that was in Mr. Samansky's letter again, as defined in number 13. I spent some time organizing this, and sometimes I organize myself into not being organized anymore.
Does the resolution, when it refers to external things, need to be listed? As exhibit G, it's not the G above, right? Or is it that part of that G?
As that part of the G above.
The le, the letter of October 12th?
Yep. That was in response, I believe. This addresses the comments of Denise Lord. And in her memorandum, so number 13. Inspection and maintenance schedules for the stormwater features should be added to the plans to ensure that the infiltration basins performed as designed. And he wrote, "A section has been added to the end of the notes section entitled Stormwater Management System, Inspection and Maintenance, which details the type and extent of the maintenance required and the minimum frequencies in which they are to be performed." And that was also as a result of Denise Lord's request.
And number eight. Grass pavers installed on the property as a condition of the Kent Dolls or Fire Department.
Actually, do we have the answer on the homeowner's document? Just seems like several of us had questions about that.
What was the question?
What exactly that they had to provide and how it was being reviewed before it was confirmed to be suitable for the special perm, for the, yeah, for the special permit? I think that was the does that get reviewed a second appearance for the commission?
We look at number 11. That the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions and Restrictions, the Bylaws, the Articles of Incorporation and the Rules be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to the issuance of zoning permits and/or any certificates of compliance. That's number 11.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, that number 11 was, was not my proposal, but I thought that whoever proposed it, wanted those things submitted to the commission and be subject to its satisfaction. Not merely that they be submitted, but that they be satisfactory to us.
You can add those words if you want to, but like we had discussed at the last meeting, there are certain things that will not be available to us until there's actual a certain percentage of turnover to the new homeowners from the developer as homeowner of the property.
Donna, this is Alice. I was the one that very much concerned that we not, that we have not seen any of the contents of a homeowner, the homeowners' covenants, any of this stuff. And I understand that some of that evolves as the homeowners association is taken over by the home, homeowners. But I, we have not been, nothing has been presented that I'm aware of that tells us anything about what the homeowners association is responsible or not responsible for. And covering financing the, or the association as well as longevity, as well as maintenance of any, who's responsible for any issues, whether they be legal or otherwise within the community. So I would suggest, I, I don't know the wording, but I was gonna mention this when we got to 11, that we have seen nothing. Nothing, zero about what constitutes the homeowners association.
And Alice, if I can just add one more thing to your list.
Wait one second, Ann. I'm sorry, but as an alternate, now that we're not in the public hearing mode, you cannot make comment. Sorry, I just found that out the other day. But I thought we had gotten some sort of preliminary bylaw that was going to show us a sampling of what the bylaws would look like and some of the things that they would be responsible for. That was presented, I believe, by Mr. Bacon. With the rest of the information, I know to, to create those documents is, is, there's a lot of investment in there for them. And some of them, they can't give to us now. That's why it says both zoning permit and certificates of compliance.
Donna, I do not recall seeing anything that even a sample of a homeowners association bylaws.
Daryl, I think you brought it up at the last meeting, didn't you?
Yeah, so they submitted, I don't know, this. It says HOA covenants, homeowners association covenants regarding appearance, improvements, alterations will be subject to P and Z review as a condition of application approval to verify they sufficiently ensure the outline below. And then they do give a pretty robust listing of those conditions. I won't read them all, but there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. I can read them. I am assuming that this is part of their application packet and is enforceable. The question is, how much of this we can codify right now? And do we get to look at all these factors listed on this sheet for each individual unit? Or at what point do we get to enforce it? Because there's certainly things in here that I would find, you know, pretty important for us to look at, you know, for instance, design guidelines cover cladding materials, finishes, fenestration, roof style, building type, et cetera, consistent with this application. Landscaping guidelines, no outdoor storage of recreational vehicles or trailers.
But talk about the financing of the homeowners association. That was one of the big questions, how we know it's gonna survive.
Donna, do you think that this document Daryl is reading from is in this, the files that I could find from prior meetings?
It's probably not in the public meeting scan file. I believe that they showed it at the meeting, and I would have to go through my emails, but it's part of the record.
So it's not this was one of the reasons I was looking at it, because you know, I'm concerned with them keeping the meadow a meadow. And, you know, the, that the renderings that they provided for the units, that those are able to be consistently enforced. And, you know, one of the overall factors is HOA to manage conservation areas, maintain shared properties, drainage areas, and specific features of individual properties. Screening trees adjacent to southern neighbor, access paths, et cetera. So I think what they have listed is good. It's just a matter of, you know, how do we employ this to, to keep tabs on it? You know, both for the development and more importantly, going forward if this happens. You know.
Catch basins and other shared service, shared infrastructure, right, as well, memory serves?
Right. When it was a town road, some of that infrastructure and some of this obviously would have had oversight from the town. Now that it's privatized, you know, we have a little less clarity as to what, what happens internally. You know, benefits to that as well. But some of this does need to be specified, and I don't know if that comes now or if, if it's approved, if you have a second bite at the apple each time a unit comes for a zoning permit.
It doesn't seem like we'd want to take a bite each time. It seems like we'd want a gate where they've completed the document and hit the things that are to our satisfaction is considered done. It's a waste of their time and ours if we're looking at it every time a house is, is proposed. But I don't know how we put that in a special permit.
Well, I think we can put it in a special permit. We can just change the verbiage that it, it already says that they have to supply us with that to get the certificate of compliance. So they have to supply it to us, and it needs to be acceptable to us to get their certificate of compliance. Until they get their certificate of compliance, they can't do anything.
So I believe
they can't, they can't utilize what they're built.
So I believe it's also in, in granting the permit.
Wes, your move.
Says both, doesn't it? It says, it says that it's in granting the, because we had this discussion. There's no way they can give us that in any, in any kind of final form, which means that anything at all can be changed in it. So forcing them to, to give us something now is this futile, because they're gonna change it. They're gonna have to change it. They're gonna have to do, do things to it. So what we need is for them to provide it to us prior to our giving them a certificate of compliance for zoning. So that we can review it as a commission and have input on it before before the compliance is, is given.
At a public hearing, like a full approval, or is that just a and the rules be submitted to and accepted by the planning and zoning commission?
I don't think it can be a public hearing, because at this point, the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, that's, I mean, is it a new, it's not new, so it would just be the commissioners reviewing it.
Yeah, I don't know, Donna, how would that happen? Because if the, if the, if the public hearing is already closed, they can't actually give us anything. Nobody can. So so how could we? How, how is it possible, or do we need to change the certificate of compliance in a way that, that enables us to have a to accept and have a separate hearing, it would have to be a separate hearing regarding their their bylaws?
If we put it in as a condition, they have to submit it, just like we have done with Burchill. We did with High Watch. They're allowed to submit if we are requesting it as a condition of approval. If they want to come in and they want to modify any of the conditions that we have in here now, the commission has the option of either accepting those modifications at a regular meeting or they can accept those modifications at another public hearing based on the importance. I don't want to say severity, but the severity of the change. If the commission feels that this is a major change to the special permit, they can go ahead and have another public hearing, but it would be up to the commission to make that decision at the time.
So for now, we could change the verbiage in this, in this certificate of approval to say that they have to submit and we have to accept as a commission their, their declaration of covenants and conditions and restrictions and bylaws and articles of incorporation, et cetera.
Yeah, if you want to. I mean, this is, you know, the resolution is a draft.
So I guess I would move that we change that. So it says, and the rules be submitted to and approved by the planning and zoning commission, and just add those words in there.
I'll second that. So a question for Donna, if we wanted to establish design standards that, you know, for instance, the cladding of the units could only be gray, brown, white, or red, and they could only mow a 50-foot band around each unit, and they couldn't put all the AC units on the Route 7 side, and, you know, maybe even dictate the style of shingles, where would all that come into play? Would they submit it? We would approve it, and then that would be a checklist for each unit as it was constructed? Or do we have to define that now?
I would say that you would need to define that now, because this can, these conditions of approval are applying to the entire project and not to just one individual unit.
You know, that was one of the nice things about the Kent School Housing Development that went in. You know, obviously, we had a lot of concerns about that close to the road. And one of the things I remember is we did not want that subdivision housing hamlet oriented all towards the center and see all the backsides from Skip Mountain. So we specifically said that not all the utilitarian units could be on the roadside, and that there should be some detailing that acknowledged the road and not just the interior. Was that all baked into the approval?
Yes.
Okay.
This be covered by item 10 in any case? This all have to go to the ARB, right?
Yeah, the ARB approved the the concept. And the applicant has agreed to come back to the ARB for the construction of each individual unit prior to that construction.
It, it would seem to me that it would make the most sense for the developers or the applicant to have these bylaws and restrictions done all at once. They're going to need to present them to any future buyers. And I'd like to know, just for the record, what their answer was when you asked them, Donna, as Alice suggested at the last meeting, to please provide them. They, I, I guess it's, they can provide them later, but I don't understand what the holdup is.
I don't know. I, I have no answer. You know, just except for the answer that was given during the public hearing when that question was, was initially asked.
I mean, they're not gonna be able to sell any of these units to anyone who hasn't read the, the restrictions in the bylaws. So it, it, it should be a one-step thing. And, and I mean, I think Alice's concern is correct. We, we should have had them by now, but as long as it can be a, a condition that it should be done at once.
Well, I think that the language to be submitted and approved by planning and zoning makes a lot of sense.
You know, they did submit pictures along with the verbiage that I read of, you know, the colors and the scheme and the design language and things like that. I just don't know if that's enough to go by. I mean, or, or if we'd like it, how to enforce it.
Well, we don't enforce color. You know, that's one of the things that when we had talked about the ARB, you know, that we never, we never have, and that's we just never addressed color. The ARB does not address color. And I think that those are just renditions of styled design, but not the color.
But I would argue that this is somewhat what we're basing it on, you know, for lack of anything else. And so we, we have to go by the materials that are submitted. So there's language and images, which they specifically gave to us as representative. So, you know, that's what I would be basing what my impression of the units would be, unless they want to submit something else.
Right. Well, they can't right now, but the impression that I was But well, they can't right now, but the impression that I was under when they presented that was that these were the style design. But the actual outside material that they were going to be using had yet to be chosen, and that would drive the color as well. So. But that would be something that the ARB would be looking at. Unless the ARB refers it back to the commission. I'm sorry, David.
That's okay. I was just gonna say, it feels like we're we're gonna get multiple bites back at this apple. And the special permit is inclusive of everything they have presented.
Right.
So when they when they come to us with the pre-application to the ARB, they'll have that information when they ask us for. To approve the covenants, etc., will have that information. It seems like we'll have ample ample opportunity to weigh in if they decide to show up with fuchsia and titanium panels or something.
They're also they're going to have to come back to us with. If they're gonna come back to us with the with all their. You know, declarations of covenants, etc. It can't be that far away because Karen's right. They can't sell a unit. Because who's going to buy it without that? So that they may be working on it, and they may not be ready yet, but long before they need the certificate of compliance, they're going to have to have that done. Or they're not going to be selling anything. So they'll be able to provide it to us, and we'll be able to review it.
Well, I do believe they're going to have to work with this throughout the the process, and that's the point.
So none of your commission members can leave. So there we go. Hey, you want to go back to number eight?
There is a motion on the floor.
Oh, is there? Yes, I'm sorry. You're right.
So I think that we should alter the the language, but we're going to approve this as a motion. All at once.
Well, no, but we're the motion to to change the verbiage, Wes. On number 11. You're you're on mute.
So David moved and you seconded?
I did.
Okay, thanks, Adam. All right, so. I think Wes will need to vote on that.
Okay, so all in favor of that, sign and five are raising your hand? Okay, so we've we've modified number 11. To to read then, Donna, that the declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions, the bylaws, articles of incorporation, and rules be submitted to Planning and Zoning Commission prior to it. No, no, to to be submitted and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to issuance of a zoning permit and or certificates of compliance. So they have to do this prior to getting a zoning permit.
Right.
Which means they can't get building permits until they get the zoning permit.
Right.
Well, it says and or.
Right.
It says so and or, right.
And or so they if they don't do it before they before they they get the permit, they they can still get the permit. They just can't get the certificate of compliance.
Well, they can't but they can't get compliance until they built it. So obviously, it had to get the permit first.
Why don't we take out or?
Because I can give a zoning permit for the construction. Because they're not going to be able to give us, I don't believe, and I this is what I had checked, were the articles of incorporation. There's a there's a an amount of property that needs to be sold before they can convert it and turn it over to the homeowners and so association. So that's why I'm saying and or the certificates of compliance.
So let's just take out zoning permits because they're obviously not going to have this before zoning. Right, if they're. Because one if if we if we approve this tonight, then they're going to apply for the permit tomorrow or whenever. But, you know, so obviously, they're not going to have us the the declarations and covenants and conditions and restrictions before the per the zoning permit. So let's just remove zoning permit before that they they can get their certificate of compliance. They have to provide that stuff to us, and we have to review it and agree to it.
Adam, I think it's much more comfortable to say before the zoning permit or and the certificate of compliance, and it covers all bases in all situations.
I would agree with that.
So take out or?
And leave zoning permits in there and say, take out or, yes.
So they'll have they'll they'll have to provide us with with as complete of a version as they can prior to they're getting a zoning permit. And getting and beginning to build. I still think that they should provide us with a complete version before we issue the certificate of compliance. You know, because it can change. It can between the the day one when they break ground and when they complete everything and they're selling units. These things can change. So I think that we should have we should have it on both ends.
You know, you know, I agree with that.
Do we want the draft ones before the zoning permits, knowing that they may not have them legally finalized until later? But that the certificate of compliance requires the finalized version?
Well, can they actually give us a my question is, I don't know, they can give us a finalized version before before they start to build. Or can they? I mean, you'd think they would have they'd have this nailed down fairly well, but it may not be complete.
I don't know. When they have their first pre-application meeting with the ARB, they should have it pretty much nailed down in order for ARB to approve it. And it would be smart if they had all the units, regardless of when they were going to build them, somewhat fleshed out. Because the first unit that gets built to the standards that are approved by ARB and perhaps us, if it comes back to us, are then going to be the ones that we're going to want to see the rest of the homes developed under. So, you know, that would be one measure of at least eliciting some kind of of a framework for what's going to happen there is that first ARB meeting from them.
So we should get it at both ends. We should get it for their zoning permit, and we should get it before the certificate of compliance is issued. And we should change the verbiage so it says that. Or at least if they provide us if they provide us one to get their zoning permit and it doesn't change. Then they don't have to give it to us again, but it's gonna change.
So you have a motion on the floor?
No, we don't. We approved it. Now we're talking in another motion.
No, the second motion Alice had made was to remove the or from the.
Will we remove the and?
Remove the or. From the and or.
Up to the issues. And and the I think we should remove the or so it'll say prior to the issuance of zoning permits and any certificates of compliance, and that covers us on both ends. And if and if 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 their documents don't change prior to this certificate of compliance, then they just have to let us know that.
So any further discussion on that?
Adam, you're going to second this, right?
I have seconded it, yes.
So any other further discussion on that? If not, then approved by resident. Okay, motion passed.
And we're okay with number eight? That was a request by the Kent Volunteer Fire Department in their letter letter of approval. So that one's okay. And then on to nine. This was something that Paul had said verbally during one of the conversations. Originally, they had said that it was going to be, I think, three years or five years and. And then he finally said, you know what? We'll maintain it in perpetuity by the homeowners association. And I believe that Mr. Bacon agreed to that as well. So that's why that's in there.
So I do recall him saying that.
Did did we receive any? I can't recall. Did we receive any idea of the screening, like what that comprises of?
Yeah, it's in the site plans. It's going to be the great Arbivites. They're going to be putting in more of them. And from what I understand, the great Arbivite is the one that grows the tallest, the fastest. So that you wouldn't have to wait for the regular Arbivite to fill it in. So they're putting in the maybe it's called the giant Arbivite. And they were going to.
I think I think they initially proposed green giant Arbivite, but then they switched to Norway's spruce cedar. Per the engineer's recommendation, per our engineer's recommendation.
Did they? I don't remember that. I don't remember, but that that's your that's what you're used to hearing. So.
I guess I could look it up, but is there a fence involved in the design of the screening? I I just can't recall.
I don't believe there's any fencing. There might be construction fencing that's going in. But then, um, once the construction is done, that fencing will be taken down, and it'll just be on the screening. And it'll be maintained in perpetuity.
So as I just noted last time, you know, I'm not going to fight it, but these trees will grow up and block the views that people are concerned with, particularly if they're have to be maintained in perpetuity. So there will always be a a green wall there eventually, and, you know, Norway's spruce are going to get 60 feet tall. The cedars are more of a of a meadow type tree, you know, successional tree. That's actually a good choice. I love Norways. But if 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 views are what you want to maintain on the south edge, that those are not going to provide it eventually.
Well, do we want to change that then? I think that now is the time to do that with what Daryl is saying. If we want to do something about that, we can. We can change what they're what they're suggesting that they're planting.
You know, I think the engineer suggested Norways because they're super durable. And forgiving, they can be maintained to a certain degree, but obviously, they're going to want to strive to be a full-size conifer. So they can be tortured for a while and maintained, but ultimately. You know, you'll be fighting Mother Nature. The the green giants are great, but they're in a little more maintainable, but they're going to look more suburban. They're not the typical columnar Arbivite form. They do loosen up as they get older. They're a little more maintainable, but, you know, I I think any wall there is is going to be a visual attraction to the eye. But if it, you know, makes good neighbors, then then, you know, that could be worth it. I just wanted to point that out that heading north to south, looking across to the southwest is is kind of a nice view shed, and and some of that will be obscured. And, you know, maybe those those trees could, you know, I I perhaps something, you know, keep the teeth in the enforcement right now in perpetuity. They wanted to modify it to eliminate trees in the future. I'm sure that we would be open to that based on the people living there and the neighbors to the south.
Yeah. That was condition number 23 from anchor consideration should be given to substituting a portion of the green giant Arbivites and the westerly planted buffer with a law with other evergreen species in order to promote biodiversity within the buffer planting and provide a buffer that will blend more naturally with the surrounding environment.
But there's no other lines of evergreen, so it's pretty tough to do.
Yeah, I mean, and this just basically is saying that they're going to maintain them. The screening, the screening is not. It's not specific. You know.
Well, the site the site plan, the site plan's denoted with specific trees.
Okay, so if this that's I was just going to say, so if the site plan is going to be changed, I have to come in and modify that and let us know what they're going to be putting in as far as the landscaping plan is concerned.
It seems like the screen was specifically mentioned by the the nearest neighbors a few times in the public hearing and in the letters. So maybe we should just let it stand. Perhaps people might if it gets approved, people might change their minds that they could come back to amend it.
Okay. Number 10, you pretty much discussed already. That was the fact that they have to come back for the ARB. For each individual home. And that was something that they did say at the Architecture Review Board meeting. So they are aware. It was a comment that was made to them. We did a number 11, and now we're on to number 12. The ones that are in italics are conditions that some of the commission members had asked to be put in. So now that that's up to you guys to discuss. And I'm going to mute myself now.
So how do you all feel about the the community bar?
I feel like it's part of their concept. I I don't totally get it, but it's not mine to get. It's theirs to get. Part of what they want is to have this community center. They think that that's what's gonna make this for them. So I'm I'm not. I don't know why I'd be opposed to it.
I agree.
That's a communal space allowed a smaller footprint so that not everyone's building a huge shell that they rarely use for larger events and parties. They have this space, you know, I think. At whatever point it was called a clubhouse kind of turned, you know, sentiment against it, but it's a barn that they can use for group and, you know, multiple-person events that allows the other units on site to be smaller. It seems pretty pretty much in keeping with lowering the intensity of the development.
Yeah, I would I would agree with that. I would just say if it's going to be successful or if it is successful, that seems like number 13 might not be such a bad idea. Because if it's successful in reducing intensity and you have more people driving down there to meet up, particularly in the winter weather and people don't want to walk, perhaps maybe we should ask them to go from, I think it was two parking spaces, if memory serves, to at least a couple more.
How do you all feel about that?
Well, I think if if the community center is going to be worth doing, absolutely, we should have more parking. Now, that question is, does that big outside visitors and more traffic than would otherwise happen if the parking places weren't there?
Well, I don't think we ought to add parking to its size. But to add a couple of more spaces wouldn't be a bad idea.
I I would say I have no problem with the community center. And I don't see why the number of parking spaces is of any concern to us. The community center is for the residents in this little complex. So how many spaces they have? is up to them. I, I don't see why we care. It's not open to the public. So if there's not enough parking there, too bad for the residents. I don't see what businesses of ours.
I agree with Mark. They, they should be leaving their cars at their units and walking down to the barn.
Well, I think that's, I think that's the whole concept.
And if they're having a, a gathering there, they're going to have outside family members, whatever. Come there, then. I mean, people can pull on the side of the road, you know, inside of their roadway and park right in front of it. Half on the grass or all the way on the grass. And that's for the community to to have a problem with or not have a problem with. You know, we all do it. This is a pretty rural area we live in, you know, I don't remember who I was talking to about, but nobody thinks twice about driving across grass here. You know, parking on grass, I mean, this is what we all do. We, this is, we're not a suburb and people can park on the grass there too.
Then get pulled out with your tractor. Why don't we just take twelve and thirteen out then? I would be comfortable moving that.
Do, do we need to, to vote on that or could just leave it out?
I just think you should vote on it just to keep it clean. That's all.
Plus, we have a motion. We have a second, so.
Who's second? I know David made the motion. Who seconded? Adam, did you?
No.
I didn't.
Daryl did? So that's going to remove numbers twelve and thirteen?
Yeah, all in favor of that, raise, raise your hand. Okay, so twelve and thirteen are eliminated.
Now you're on to fourteen.
Number fourteen is just in case we want to increase the area preserved as open space. Is that correct, Donna?
Yes.
And that seventy-five percent could be any number. It's any number north of forty percent that we decided.
Right.
I think forty percent is good and I don't have any use for number fourteen. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I don't have any use for it. What, what I noticed was that the easements weren't included in that, in that calculation either. So the easements are all underground. So virtually there's more than forty percent.
Wes, could you explain that a little better? I'm not sure.
Well, on the site plan, it has, it, it lists the square footage of the open space exclusive of easements. So that to me means that, that area of the easements were not included in that calculate, in that open space calculation.
And the easements can't be built on, so.
Then the easements can't be built. So it's virtually open as, as well. That, that's my only point. I mean, it's going to make some difference, but.
And how, how, who determines the easement's size or is that determined by the house itself? I'm sorry, I'm.
Well, I think it's more a utility easement. So it's what's practical to get utilities and then that walkway down to the, to pool area.
I, I don't think simply increasing the percentage of open space really accomplishes what I would like to see accomplished, which is maintaining the view shed because the applicants can simply play with the open space area and still cut off the view shed. So I, I, I don't think, I think it's a heavy-handed and inappropriate way to get it what I think we're trying. Some of us may want to try and achieve.
I want to ask just sort of philosophically on this minimum space. At our last meeting, they showed what they consider to be most of the open space. And Paul used a red marker and circled it. And most of it was the part that Wes, you've seen and David's seen, that's very unbuildable. I, I'm not sure I, for this whole subject of open space. If you have a piece of property and half of it is unbuildable, does that just by definition mean you've got plenty of open space and you can just pack it in on the rest of it? Or does space that is completely unbuildable? Maybe that makes up the entire forty percent. I, and this does in this case. And that part he circled was thirty-nine percent, I believe he said, of the property. So that means he could build on every other inch of it, to your point, Mark. I, so I think that it is consequential to us any, and it would depend on the piece of property, what's buildable and what's not buildable. But I, I could be seeing this back gas words, but somehow the forty percent is a given because it's just not, there's no way they can do anything with it. So.
Part of the purpose of the conservation subdivision is to it is to in, to give a, to entice a, a builder to not build
I understand.
in areas that that have steep slopes, certain soils. But they, they could build in those steep slopes. You know, they could do something to do that. And there's, there's houses on the sides of mountains. We look around, we see them all over. They're not great locations to build. And the part of the purpose of the, of a conservation subdivision is, is to help them not do that. And, and what we would like, at least in the conservation subdivision, is to see that, that houses can be grouped a little tighter together and there can be a larger piece of open space, whether that piece of open space is it was buildable or was, was building challenged is goes to part of the purpose of the conservation subdivision.
I, I'm really struggling with this. I personally feel the applicant should increase the open space, period. Buildable or unbuildable. I personally don't feel forty percent is enough. How they design it, I guess, is another subject. But I personally feel the, that as a commission, we have the ability to, to request more open space. We have that on our side and, and, and I think we should. And maybe it's only another ten percent, another, make it fifty. Feel that it's serving its purpose to have a conservation development if we don't have, if we're only using the minimum of the percentage that's allowed. That, that's, I'm really having a problem with it.
Well, to me, the, the percentage was the debatable item. Like you, Karen, I, I think that is what we can discuss. That did allow us to discuss that. And that is site-specific, which is what we're talking about as well. So, so I don't know what that percentage might be. But I do think that some things can be done to, to compress it. Ten percent more is not, is not a heck of a lot more, but it is more. And, and fifty percent is a lot of your land.
We, we have to, we have to worry about the density there, Wes, is my feeling. And I think by increasing the open space that, that will limit the density. Now, on the other hand, if they're willing to, if we decide as a commission that they shall be approved for this application, but they take away those four southern houses, then maybe that would make me happier. But right, right now, I, I personally feel that the, there should be an increase. I, I'm not that impressed with the forty percent or forty point two or whatever the heck it is. It, it doesn't feel right to me.
Well, I don't think that that, that is the one area that I think that we can discuss. How they design it, where they design it, I'm not sure that we can discuss that. But Karen, I do not disagree with you that, 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 that maybe because it is density, but by all of our standards, this is not dense. In coverage, this, this is a not a dense situation. But I, I think we can discuss that, you know, maybe we should, we should move on and go back to that as, as the item to, to, to really discuss.
I agree with you, Wes, and I think that it should be increased. I agree with Karen. Most definitely.
Well, let's, let's move on. Let's, let's go back to fourteen. But so, so fifteen and sixteen kind of, well, they, we, we entertained sixteen by, by the, the fact of developing the three homes in the lower area really is not practical. And it goes against the whole conservation easement or the whole conservation concept of steep slopes. That road is, is entirely too, too steep. It would be counterproductive, in my view, to try to get homes down there. It's one thing to walk down there. It's another thing to, to have to drive for, for homes.
Well, I'm a proponent of those two, so I'd like to speak to them initially. First of all, I proposed fifteen and sixteen as one condition, not as two separate conditions.
Right.
To give, to give the, the applicants the option where we wouldn't simply dictate they had to eliminate those three houses. They'd have the option to move them elsewhere. I think that's, that makes it a more palatable condition than having, you know, either eliminate them or moving to the back. They can do whichever they choose. In addition, I had proposed several whereas clauses citing to the provisions in our regulations that permitted us, in my view, to adopt this condition that speak to preservation of views or consideration of the arrangement of houses on the site and other items that I thought would support our adoption of this condition. And finally, I think in the site plan that's included in today's package, I think that the conditions that I proposed may be too vague because there are four southernmost houses on that site plan, not three. And my proposal would be that they eliminate or move. See if I can see this. I probably can't. The, the three houses that block the view shed, that's the southernmost house that is closest to Route seven and then the next two more northern houses and not the southernmost house that is towards the back of the property.
I think you're talking about unit thirteen, unit two and unit three, it looks like.
I think that's right, but I just can't expand my map to confirm that. But I think those are, those would be the three houses that I think block the view shed that I think we are under our regulations entitled to protect. So that would be, I guess, my modified proposal that we combine the two in fifteen and sixteen, that they either eliminate them, those three houses that I think David just referred to, or move them somewhere to unblock the view shed. And that we also adopt the whereas clauses that I proposed that support citing to the regulations that I believe give us the weight to, to adopt this condition.
I don't think that you can combine them. I think you need to ask them to do one or the other, and that's what you're going to have to decide.
I don't see why that's the case.
I, I don't think it's specific enough if you combine them. I think it's cleaner if you either do one or the other.
I, I think it's less defensible to have a condition that simply says they must eliminate them than have a condition that says either eliminate them or move them somewhere else. I think that's more, more defensible to their, to their challenge than to have them separate.
Okay. And the whereas clauses are covered under the last whereas on the front page. That's why I didn't include them. Do not satisfy all the relevant criteria for approval as submitted.
Well, the ones that I, I proposed, I think were much more specific, citing specifically to, to view shed and the arrangement of the, of the buildings on the property. And I think if, I, I don't, I don't presume that the commission's going to adopt this, but if we were to adopt it, I think we should make the whereas clauses as supportive as possible to the adoption of the, of the conditions.
I, I agree with you, Mark, on that. Can you just tell me again? I'm sorry, I'm not grasping it, but you're referring to three houses. I just pulled up from the past meeting from the October meeting, the site plan, which shows four.
Yeah, I know, that's.
Where does that fourth house go? I don't get it. If you, if you were to, you're asking.
If you, if you pull up the, the site plan proposal that's in this meeting's file.
I don't know why I don't have that.
Mark, it's in the public meeting folder.
Yeah, the public meeting folder is.
It says, it says SP for site plan, alternate ALT.
No.
Because.
No. If you look at the, it's the, it's called site development, site development plans for proposed residential subdivision. And if you go to the fourth page of that document.
In which folder is that in?
It's in today's folder.
It's, it's just called site plans. Just plain, regular old site plans. Agenda item five B one, site plans. And it's in today's, the twelve line meeting.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, it's missing there.
And if you go to the fourth, fourth page of that document.
Okay.
If you look at the southernmost part of the property, there are four houses there.
Yes.
And I would propose that I just can't, I just can't see the numbering because it's too small on my computer, but it's the in the very southernmost part of the property, the house that's closest to Route seven. And then, and then if you go north, one property, there's two prop, two, the next two properties that are just north of that first property. So I would not be excluding the southernmost property that's closest to the back of the property, if you will.
So you're going to keep unit number one? So you're going to keep Unit Number 1, eliminate Unit Number 13, Unit Number 3, and Unit Number 2?
So, Mark.
Sounds right. I just can't see it.
Unit Number 1 is the one that's back on the left. Unit Number 2 is the one that's back on the right of those four properties that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Unit Number 13 is the one closest to 7 on the left. Unit Number 3 is the one closest to 7 on the right of those four properties.
So it's the one closest on the left to 7, the one closest to the right on 7, and the one right behind the one closest to the right on 7. Maybe there's a way I can.
13, 3, and 2.
Yeah, I think we're, we all understand.
Yeah, it markets 13, 3, and 2.
I'll take your word for it. Okay.
Maybe they can move one to the community house. Not my business.
I mean, I suppose in theory, they could shove them all to that middle open space.
Well, then they won't have a conservation subdivision.
Well, because they'd be opening up all the space.
Well, in my view, Units 1 and 2 don't block the view shed. If you're considering the view shed as driving north, correct, Mark?
David, do you think you can share that site plan and get to Page 4?
Yeah, can I share?
Thank you. You should be able to. I haven't, I haven't stopped sharing.
Does that work?
Yep, there you go.
So I think.
Yes, Units 13, 3, and 2.
So we're talking about taking these three and moving them somewhere.
Correct.
They would have to decide.
Yes.
Now, if they move them here, then all, they would still have big contiguous open space. It would just change the structure of their.
You'd have to move them somewhere that didn't block the view shed.
I don't think we should be designating where they move. If we want to move them to somewhere else on the property, they went to school to figure out where things should go. That's their job to do. If what we want is to open that space up for the view shed, then we should tell them that they need to move those three houses, which will open up that space for the view shed.
It seems to me that it's Unit 13 and and 3 that blocked the view shed. Those two back ones don't really.
Well, I looked at an early version of this proposal, this presentation, and they showed which houses blocked the view. And I believe it was these three, not just the two. And I think that third house, Unit 2, I think does block the view shed.
Well, that house is also, I don't have a scale, but it looks, this is 1 to 40. Unit Number 2 has got to be close to 200 feet from the road.
That may be.
You know, that's all important. So from the road, it's about 300 feet.
Yeah, maybe even a little further. But I walked out and paced this. That's about 75, 80 yards, 90 yards from that curb cut, to give a matter of scale. I am, being one of the newer members, I spent a lot of time reading through the POCD and the regulations. I also went out to the property and spent a bunch of time just walking it, staring at it. I stood on the road in a few places. I stood along the wall and kind of looked. I mean, obviously, there's a lot going on. We're talking about the view. When I think about, like, the southern gateway, I mean, with the approach to town there, you're spending a lot of time on a very straight road with very large fields. It's, I don't know, 60 seconds, 90 seconds. It's a very long trip into town. With the northern gateway, which is, I guess, kind of a little bit vague, I watched, I actually drove back and forth a couple of times, and I watched cars drive. You've got, I mean, this is effectively a hill and a curve that you have no, you have no view of anything until you get past it. And somebody coming from the south, you're coming up a hill and a curve. So from this, if you're coming from the north, it's about two seconds at 30 miles an hour that you see this view. And if you're exiting town, if you're generous and you're not speeding, maybe five seconds. Like I said, you kind of come up a hill, it appears, and then you've got this giant hill here, which blocks your view very quickly. You could argue, I guess, that this is not a gateway just because it's so tiny, or you could argue that this is what we have left to be a gateway, and we should try to preserve it. I feel like it's, like, you don't get a lot of time to stare at this gateway and admire it the way you get to admire the one in the south. Unless you're standing there, you know, you get out of your car, and I think very few people are going to get out of their car here. There's really nowhere to stand and walk. There's no shoulder. You know, I parked on Cobble Road and walked over there. But other than the neighbors immediately to the south, and I think maybe some neighbors across the road, the view is not, does not get a lot of, a lot of time. And it worries me that we're spending a lot of time focused on the view aspect without giving equal credence to the more, what in our POCD and our regulations say are more important, which is the fact that we're keeping open space, preserving it for nature, for animals, and also trying to encourage builders to build on, not build in wetlands and steep slopes. So I'm not going to say it's not a pretty meadow. It was very nice. I enjoyed my stroll. But it is remarkably tiny when you're in a car driving. And I just, I don't want to feel like we're giving a little too much emphasis on that fact. Like, if this were, you know, a solid 500 yards, and you were gazing as you enter town, it would feel very much like a gateway, but this really feels like something you kind of blow by. Past a very tall hill, and then you immediately come around a curve, and then you immediately go down a curve. That's, this is my experience from actually going out there and spending an hour trying to experience what it's like both in a car and on the ground.
Well, David, also, you noted that there is a large berm on the southern side to the neighbor's property and a great deal of elevation drop.
Yeah.
Right.
You don't see it until you really come up that hill. Like, it's really very short. You don't get a lot of time to see it.
Well, to me, the most useful thing that we can do is look at the percentage of open space and not try to design this.
I would agree with that. I, when I was reading through the POCD, I know we like to quote, like, from the POCD, what should be driving our thinking. I found it interesting, you know, obviously, it's trying to balance a lot of things. On Page 9, I think it addresses this very specific thing, additional opportunities to extend natural corridors, permanently protect scenic vistas, enhance recreational access. It mentions special consideration for the protection of the northern gateway. It doesn't actually say what the northern gateway is. You can go look in other documents for that, but it does talk about the open fields surrounding within the village center of prime concern for the town's world and scenic character. It also talks about how we should be encouraging density. So it talks about the conservation design subdivision, or an example of a density incentive. And we've spoken before, this is VR2. This is a lot that we had expected as a zoning board to have some level of density, not VR1, but VR2, so a decent number of houses. And it also talks specifically about conservation design subdivisions on Page 27. Cluster development means building, a building pattern concentrating units on a particular parcel, particular portion of the parcel, so one-third of the parcel remains open space. And again, they're not talking about view shed. They're talking about just open space as, I believe, as an important conservation aspect. When I dove into VR2 a bit, I mean, it also talks about encouraging the preservation of open space, farm and soils, community character. It specifically talks about to encourage or require the use of flexible site designs for development being constructed in harmony with natural resources and the natural capability of the land. To me, that implication is trying to find density without doing things like building on very steep slopes and building on wetlands. It very specifically calls out priority for open space should be given to primary conservation areas, steep slopes, and secondary stuff is on ridgeline scenic views and vistas. So when I look in the regulations, it's very clearly saying, well, views are important. It's far more important that we're preserving, in this case, I think, slopes and maybe, I don't know if there's any wetlands, but certainly the steep slopes. The regulations don't really call out density specifically. I mean, you can infer it, that the fact that this was zoned that way. I would assume that at some point in the last 34 years, somebody looked at this, at this property and realized that a big chunk of it is difficult to build on and should be discouraged from building on it. So, you know, I took some, I appreciated developers' effort to not do that and try to come with the community that makes sense for them. You know, in some ways, I kind of wished during the public hearing, if we were concerned about trying to get more open space, that perhaps we'd given them the opportunity to look at increasing density in other ways. I don't know if they would have considered townhouses for a couple of the units as a way to open up that meadow. But they clearly have a goal in trying to put units on the property at a density it supports and make sure that they're not impacting all the space that the regulations very clearly call out as something that we should preserve. I understand, we're talking about kind of increasing the amount of open space required. You know, if we were to, like, a true compromise would be saying, hey, we want to increase open space, but in return, we'll let you extend density in other ways. I don't know how the developers or people would feel about that, but it would, seems like it could be difficult to do at this point in the application process. So I guess the summary, sort of what I'm saying is that the POCD talks about both of the things we're trying to accomplish here, density in the right way and preserving open space. Ultimately, the balancing act is, I really, to figure out if we think the developer is adhering to both the rules of the regulation, which I think they very clearly are, but also if they're doing the spirit of it and if we're giving proper weighting to the different aspects.
Well, it should also be pointed out that the POCD is an ideal, is idealistic. It's not regulatory. And we're discussing regulations now. We're not discussing planning as in the POCD is its purpose.
Understood.
Well, I'll just say, I didn't refer to the POCD, I don't believe, in either of the whereas clauses that I drafted. I referred to our regulations that in considering site plans, we're supposed to consider the preservation of natural attributes such as scenic views both from the site and onto and over the site. And in consideration, and considering special permit criteria in our regulations, we are supposed to whether, consider whether appropriate consideration has been given to scenic resources, including scenic or unique features which enhance the character and environment of the area. So I think it is not merely a matter of what the POCD says. And finally, in what we're supposed to consider in reviewing site plan applications includes the arrangement of buildings, structures, and uses on the site. So I don't think this is simply a matter of what the POCD recommends. I think it is a matter of what our regulations state we're supposed to consider.
And I agree with you.
And if we're to pay any attention to what was said by the public at the public hearings, which I assume we are supposed to do, most of the comments related to the view. Not the percentage of open space.
So I actually read every letter, and then I categorized them by what they were concerned by. We had four positive letters. We had seven kind of neutral or mixed and 75 negative after I took out the duplicates. 52 people expressed concern on the overall density and rural character. We had 26 on the open space view, 17 on town infrastructure, 59 on traffic. And then there were a handful of low digits. I might be wrong on a couple of those, but I think that's largely, largely correct. My, my challenge, when I hear what you're saying, I understand where you're coming from with respect to view. I'm also looking at the regulations having, with this being zoned as VR2. If this were not VR2, where there was obviously no implication or expectation, there's going to be some reasonable number of houses on the lot, I think it'd be, the view might take a, be a stronger argument. But at the end of the day, this was clearly appropriate that the town was expecting to be the final extension northward of the town center. So if we're going to take action, which will effectively reduce the usable density of the lot, it just seems like we're opening ourselves up to kind of ignoring what the most important thing about the VR2 zone is and looking at secondary aspects of the conservation zone. That would be my concern there. I'm going to pause the share. You want me to keep it up?
It's okay with me if you take it down. I don't know if anybody else needs it up at this point.
That was very useful. Thank you.
You know, I would say that the view dynamics are going to change drastically once there's any kind of development on this parcel. So absent an outside organization of the town preserving it in its entirety, speaking about southern views when there's going to be houses adjacent to that very narrow corridor, it's not going to be the same as what people are experiencing right now. And as I've stated before, I'm a proponent of keeping the development along the Route 7 corridor, minimizing the disruption to the site. I think having the homes along Route 7 and keeping the lower meadow intact as a more valuable wildlife corridor, open space, there'll just be a pool down there as opposed to three homes, I think, is a better development pattern for the parcel. I think having the homes closer to the road is also more typical of a New England pattern, which is listed as the purpose of this VR2 zone. Everything's protected to the south. This is the last chance for the town to expand easily on the sewer and water lines. I know the intent is, by a lot of people, is to try to create a moat around what we love in the center of Kent, but I think constricting this moderate amount of development is a tourniquet. You know, it's going to restrict things and, you know, And, you know, twenty five, fifty years down the road, it's going to seem pretty short sighted. If we did not allow reasonable development on this parcel that actually has impact. I think thirteen homes gets to the point where some of the people there may be full time. Thirteen homes means there probably are going to be kids from that subdivision populating the schools and keeping it. At a critical number. I I think out of those thirteen homes, there could be people that volunteer on commissions. That's probably enough homes for people to be shopping daily in town. So. If this parcel is going to be developed, it seems like there's a critical mass that we should make that development worthwhile and. Reducing it by house number or by increasing open space, I don't think is going to give. The rewards that. That you would seek doing that. I I just think the parcel is too small. It's you pass by it too quickly and it would be a half measure that would yield. A development that was not beneficial to the town and wouldn't give the views and the feeling that everybody, you know, desires now based on the current current site.
You know, I I think as we're all looking at this and looking at this application, we should look at. Consider the ramifications of of what we do. So let's say we. We accept that their application, but with the removal of those houses in the southernmost region. Which I don't know, maybe that makes this subdivision. Not worthwhile for them to do at that point. So maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. So let's say they don't. So the next thing for them to do, what is that? Maybe they decide, well, we're going to build for two million dollar houses here. One of those is going to be a great big house. Right there in that southern area that sits right on top of those four houses. And then there's going to be one right to the right of it over and over because they're not going to push the houses way back. They're going to keep the houses forward. So that these bigger homes have these big, beautiful backyards looking out at the river. That, by the way, they have the right to do. We have no say about. There are other things that they would have the right to do. So as you're considering this and considering either denying this application or or. Making changes to it that may make their development of it. Not worthwhile. Their next step is not just to sell the property, is to do something else with it. Which will, in the end, take away the view shed. Except we won't have anything to say about.
Well, I would just say in response to that, Adam, that we should be considering the application before us, not. Gee, if we turn this down or modify it, what else they might do, since we have no idea what else they really might do. And I would also say with regard to the slopes in the back of the property that they find or that are in fact unbuildable. That's not our problem. They picked this property to try to develop. If it's got a lot of area in it that can't be built on, that's their problem, not our problem.
I mean, it's a little bit disingenuous to say that if we're asking if we're essentially wanting to remove. Two seven was it two thirteenths of the buildable area. Like that, I don't think they would have bought the property assuming that we were going to mandate they couldn't use a big chunk of the buildable area.
Also to point out that this is a lot less dense than it could have been. Under another development. I mean, they they haven't gone overboard with the number.
David. I think you just mentioned if you remove those three houses, it was something. Back to the subject of what is what we require as open space, the percent, if we talk about that. If those if that southern section had no houses on it, this is if I'm not proposing anything right now. How much do you think that would add to the percent? Of open space. Right now, their percent is roughly right at forty percent, right? That's open space. What do you think that would add to it? Anybody? That knows. Dimensions.
It seems.
Yeah, go ahead.
It seems to me that they could rearrange. But again, I don't think that we should be talking about eliminating lots.
Well, I did. I'm not proposing they eliminate. I'm just trying to get a sense of if we were to increase. I'm not trying to propose anything here. I just if we wanted to increase the four forty percent to sixty percent. Which is one way to do it, then they can figure out what to do with that. And just as to get a visual in my head of what that might mean. Would that little section, that southern section add twenty percent? And I'm not saying that's the place it would come from. Maybe it comes from the northern. I don't know. I'm just suggesting that we. Haven't gone back to tackle. The issue of increase. Some of you don't think it's makes any difference whether we have forty percent or seventy five percent. I'm not so sure that I agree with that. So I'm trying to think about if we change that percent rather than picking out. A house here or house there, what effect that would have. It would perhaps reduce density. It might not. I don't know. I just.
It seems like they were if we asked them to increase the open space, so they could just shrink lots of to a point. Yeah, eventually it's just right. They would the houses would get denser in the sense that they would all be closer together.
Yeah, yeah.
It's hard to know.
Alice, I'm gonna take a wild shot at this because I am in that kind of business.
Right.
It looks to me like it would be a an additional ten percent.
Yeah, that's right. Yep. And by the way, Wes, I it's all just picking words, but. I think the P O C D is more has more gravitas than to just say it's idealistic pie in the sky. We spend a lot of time and energy and money. And it's.
It was pie in the sky.
No, you said.
I said it's it's conceptual in nature.
Right, and it's an ideal to work towards.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that's what I meant by pie in the sky. Sorry, I didn't mean to put words in your mouth, but. I think it I granted it is not a regulation, but it is what guides our regulations.
I'm very. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You're muted now, Karen.
Oh. I'm very appreciative of the points that that Mark has. Pointed out to us. I've been a real cheerleader about the P O C D. I I find that that document so inspiring. And I like, I've learned a lot from listening to you all and listening in particular to Mark's comments and I. Think that the the site plan consideration is I I'm now on that page and I think it's very important. And it does talk about the arrangements of the structures and and how how they should be on the property. But you know, the other option we have, folks, is to deny the application. And let these let these applicant come back to us with a better plan. And personally, I've lived here my whole life and I don't find ten houses on twelve plus acres unreasonable. And they have a pool and they have the well, the all the buildings together. Okay, the pool, the community barn and the remaining houses. That's not unreasonable. That that's a that's a lot of homes on a small piece of property. So I, if we can't come to conclusion on on what to do with the open space or what to do with these houses. I think we should deny the application, ask them to come back to us with a better plan. Uh, we've been dealing with this since, I don't know, March, maybe. And it's wearing us out, but I but but I I think we we can't dismiss either the P O C D or the regulation. And that's what I keep saying is the compromise or the balance. And to give give someone the ability to develop ten structures on twelve acres is completely fair, in my opinion.
But not within the zone. That's not what it's done for.
How do you? How do you mean? I don't. I don't follow that.
Zoning allows far more than that.
Well, but we all know in reality, go ahead, try it. They're not they they'll be lucky if they can get these all in. So I I say if we can't come to a better agreement on this commission. To that to come up with something reasonable as the ten houses or ten structures are. And keep the open space that our town has indicated over and over, they want us to do. They elected us to guard our our town and our properties and use good sense, then deny it and let them come back. They could do it quickly. They could come back in the next month and say, okay, folks. We agree, we'll do ten houses and we'll take those four, three, four away. I think if they're going to take three, they should take four. But again, that's not up for us to design their project, but it is up to us to. Keep our town feeling rural and and still being fair about development.
How do you square that with the definition of VR two of the property?
You know, you know what? The town was asleep at the wheel. We that should have been changed a long time ago. And you know what? It I I don't think it's I don't think it's limiting them, David, from developing the the location. I don't think it is. I think I I think it's completely doable, but I I dare say they they probably can't do it on that specific property.
So I looked at the P O C D to see what we could do within our authority that might affect this property. You know, there's nothing in there that would allow us to strip the development rights out of this VR two parcel. In in the manner that, you know, might be. Beneficial to preserving some of the things we've discussed, but. One of the items under the Rural and Natural Heritage Goal Summary under Immediate Actions, it recommends that the Commission review the Conservation Development subdivision standards. To ensure the effectiveness and applicability, particularly in high priority conservation areas. When we reroute our regs, we did that. We looked at the Conservation Development subdivision standards very carefully and they're part of our regulations. So we did what the P O C D wanted. We then went a step further and we included that as a use in the VR two. Because originally we only had it in the rural zone and we felt that by including that within this area, we could further. Reduce the impact of development. So we deem this a high. Conservation area. We put the conservation development possibility in there. And the developer followed it. So it seems like, you know. We built the trough, we filled it with water, we led the horse there, they drank it all, and now we're saying you should have just sifted. Everything is laid out from the district that this is occurring in to everything that we've done relative to P O C D has led us to a point. That was predictable. So it's really frustrating to talk about reducing density in an area that everything else encourages density because it's. Part of the VR two and it's extension of the town. I mean, that's the frustrating part is we're fighting. Regulations and forces that have been in place and been reinforced over the last twenty years. So as far as I'm concerned, we did take the P O C D to heart and we did one of the things that are in our authority to do. By strengthening. The Conservation Development subdivision standards and in fact incentivizing them and making them the preferred choice over. A standard subdivision and, you know, and and we talked about that. We talked about why we were doing that and it's happened. So. I I think it's a positive outcome and even within that. Conservation subdivision framework, they did not max this out. They they further reduced it. To the point where, as I said earlier, it it's almost a waste of developing the land if you don't have a critical amount to make, dispiling it worth it. You know, either it's got to be maintained as open space or maximize it to the town's benefit and. In in terms of offensiveness, the the three main entities of the Southern Gateway, which we all love, is a barn. A small hamlet of small homes in a tight. Formation birch hill and an open field on the other side. This is like a little mini version of it. You'll be coming south, there'll be a barn. Cluster of tight houses and the field on the other side. It's not such a strange pattern. You know, that would seem to focus. Efforts on perhaps preserving the other side instead of trying to wrangle this into something where it's not going to fit what our regulations actually prescribe.
To reinforce that zoning is very serious business. We write. Our our zoning, which is specific. And we we can't simply say, just kidding, when when there's an application. That's my view.
This is a special permit application, isn't it not?
It is. It is and. I I think they have, we've we've done all. That we can to examine it.
I think we should just vote and go on. Everybody said their piece. I don't think we're gonna change anybody's mind. Let's just vote.
Well, you you can't just you can't just vote. You either you're either gonna finish the resolution of approval. Or you're gonna look at the resolution of denial and then figure out what you want to do.
I thought we were voting on whether to include. Items. Fourteen and fifteen. Fifteen and sixteen combined, as I suggested, or not, just as we voted on fourteen and twelve and thirteen. Not voting on the whole approval or denial, just on the inclusion of those conditions.
Somebody want to propose the wording of fifteen and sixteen?
Sure, I'll propose that the wording of fifteen and sixteen be the site plan be revised to either eliminate. Sites three, two, three and thirteen from the property. Or moved those sites. To a location in the property that would not block the view shed of the open fields.
Any, is that a motion?
That is.
Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right, now now let's discuss it because obviously that's that's important here. I don't believe that the two back lots prevent the view have anything to do with the view shed. That it's the front two, number thirteen and three that perhaps do. There could be latitude to move it. That is specific. That's that's my view. That's that's my view.
Wes, are you suggesting that we modify that resolution to relate only to lots with two and thirteen?
Yes, because I I think finding a location for two could be possible. I I think the other lots are far enough away from from the road and further down on the property.
Also have to remember that the road, the property goes up from the road before it starts to drop back. The road is actually lower than the than the property. So if those houses are three hundred feet back, maybe, I mean, you probably would see them still, but maybe they don't interfere with the view of the of the hills behind.
Well, as Daryl said, any any development on this is going to affect the way it is now.
Absolutely. Absolutely is.
So.
I would accept that modification.
And I'll second the Mark's acceptance.
What was the can you repeat the modification? I was typing what Mark had said.
That it only relates to lot two. So it's two and thirteen, not two, three and thirteen.
Okay.
Sites one and two remain. Thirteen and three would go somewhere else.
Did I get that wrong?
No, you have that right. I was just looking just to make sure the number thirteen is the is the most southern and forward closest to seven lot. Number three is the next lot over that is closest to seven.
Okay, so it's three and thirteen, that would be eliminated.
Yes. One and two are the ones that are behind it, that are further away.
Thank you.
So that that is your best, the so so we have a a motion and a second. I would also say in that then we should not discuss number fourteen at all.
I just have a question. If they slid those houses northward into that nice slot that's west of the barn, i- is that considered an appreciable improvement in the in the view corridor? I mean, they they have to either move there or down below.
Well, again, the the resolution was that they either eliminate them or move them to an area in the property that would not block the view shed.
So do we want to to vote on that?
Yes.
Yes. So any further discussion on that? So all in favor signify by raising your hand.
Wes, you're muted.
So I didn't see the the hand.
Four, there's four votes.
There's four votes.
Four to two.
Four to two. Okay, so the motion that that motion passes.
Okay.
So it was Wes, Mark, Alice and Karen?
No, Adam.
Adam.
Adam? Wes, Mark, Alice and Adam voted in affirmative?
Yes.
And David and Daryl?
They just didn't.
Yeah, I I don't I don't think the movement of the houses up along the road would have any material impact in terms of the view shed. And I think moving them down below is is negative in terms of the development.
Okay, and then David and then Karen, right? So it was four to three.
Correct.
Okay.
So then can I hear a motion to eliminate item number fourteen on the on the percentage of open space? In effect, we've increased the open space by doing that.
I'll move that. Second.
That was David and Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor? Raise your hand.
Wes, we haven't necessarily increased the open space.
I know.
I want to make it clear. If they if they move those two houses, yeah, we find a place to put them, then it's the same amount of open space. Since it just will be broken up open space.
But but that's fine. This forty is is the number that we.
Yeah, I just but I just wanted to be clear that we weren't that.
You're right, Adam.
Yeah, but your motion says.
That we're not necessarily increasing it.
Your motion says eliminate or move. So if it is eliminated, then the open space would increase.
Yes, but not but not for sure. It might say the same.
But you're not enough for certain.
Completely.
Right.
Correct.
But I do I do agree with getting rid of fourteen.
Want to call a vote?
Which are we voting on?
Eliminating number fourteen, which is the that a minimum of seventy five percent or more than forty of the area be preserved as conserved open space. So elim eliminating that in its entirety.
So the forty percent is still the regulation in that zone, so forty percent holds.
Right. So we just we just need a vote.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
Well, you're basically saying you're not going to change. Okay, never mind. Sorry.
What do we got here? So again, we've got four to three with Wes, Adam, Mark and David and then Alice, Karen and Daryl.
I voted for.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the elimination.
Okay, I didn't see your hand. So Alice and Karen have voted no.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So five to two.
So then the further items, we have number eighteen.
Oh, seventeen?
I'm sorry, seventeen, yes. That's something that they had offered as as part of it, this construction phasing. That was actually my submission. I I think it couldn't hurt to to retain it, or I I don't feel strongly about it now. Any other opinions?
Well, I think I think there what they proposed was that they would do the southernmost houses last, which I'm certainly in favor of. But we've now told them they have to eliminate two of those four houses. But if you think that proposal still works, I'm fine with it. They'd still have to do the remaining two houses in the southernmost portion last. Then I'm fine with that.
So that sounds like a motion. Do you have your second?
Sure.
So you're gonna.
We need to like.
You're muted and this is to remove number seventeen? Or to leave seventeen?
This was to leave seventeen.
Okay.
If they move the houses, do the new houses, do they get to pick which phase they're in?
I I think this further complicates. So I I I would say we should eliminate it. That that would be my feeling.
I I think it it doesn't matter to me which house they build first. I think it 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 benefits them to build the houses along the road first. Because those are the ones you'd want to sell first there. So.
I'm okay with eliminating it.
So that sounds like a motion and a second.
Yes, I may I'm making an official motion that we remove number seventeen.
And I will officially second it.
Okay, all in favor of that? Raise your hand.
Okay, six to one. Karen didn't vote.
So we're down to eighteen. That seems to be kind of boilerplate. I think that's good.
Yeah, eighteen, nineteen and twenty are all boilerplate that Mike puts in.
So we have then a list of conditions. What was listed here? Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. No, that fifteen is modified, sixteen and seventeen are eliminated. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm going to put the revised approval into the meeting folder. In one second.
Are you giving it a new name?
Yep. I just called it revised resolution of approval. Does not start with the agenda item on the front.
Like magic.
Yeah, I'm surprising myself, especially at this time of night. So it should be in there.
Eleven at the end ore needs to be fixed. I think we took the ore out, right?
Right.
That didn't come out?
Nope.
And Donna, I think you I think you've done twelve correctly. I still think that the whereas is that I supplied to you earlier were part of my proposal and the resolution. And you should go back and put them in as well.
I'm really, Mark, I'm not I'm not, I don't want to pick a fight. I I'm really not comfortable doing that, mostly because this is a format that I have been using under the guidance of our own land use attorney. So I I'm just not. If you're going to vote on this tonight and he's not going to see that, I would much rather that it not be in there. But and and like again, like I said, I think that that, you know, I look, I think if you look at the whereas with the relevant criteria, I think just as the record stands on with all the discussion and what will be in the record. I I I'm really not comfortable putting it in.
Mark, can you can you read it to us? Can somebody read it? The whereas is.
You know, I just make specific references to the to the precise provisions in our regulations that are
Right.
Earlier, but let's go on. I'm fine leaving it out.
I mean, I can I have it in front of me. I can read it. It's it's at it's at your pleasure, whatever you'd like to do.
You can drop it. Let's just go on.
All right, so.
We all, we we now have that in front of us. Do do we need to read it all again?
I'm going to take that ore out out of number eleven. Is there anything else that anybody sees that I missed?
I don't see any others. Anyone else?
No. Think it looks good.
So I would entertain a resolution of approval.
Um, Wes, shouldn't we read the resolution for denial first? Aren't we supposed to go through them both? I don't think we did that.
No, we didn't.
I mean, to be fair, we should go through the resolution of denial. And then somebody can make a motion for whichever.
Okay. Honestly, in discussing the 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 conditions of approval, I think that we have taken up a great deal that was in the resolution of denial. That's my view.
I agree, and I think that the the resolution denial is very straightforward. We should just have read through it so everybody's aware of what it says. To be fair and to be thorough with an application that has a lot of people watching us, we should go through the resolution of denial. We should just read through it.
Seems like the bulk of our discussion was focused on what is encapsulated in A.
I think so too. I think the the resolution denial basically is is pulling the reasons that are provided in in the regulations and we're stated in in ten four forty dot two, which really have to do with the view shed and ten four forty dot one. Which again, has with view shed or or and and refers to the P O C D.
If you could say the same thing with B as well.
Yeah.
Seems like several commissioners, several of us commissioners had a concern about overall density. Where is that addressed in these four?
I mean, you know, could it be the arrangement of building structures and uses?
It could be, except that it talks specifically about the four southernmost structures.
I don't know how density, we can put that in the resolution of denial when it's a V R two zone.
I hear what you're saying.
Density is not a valid argument, at least to me. When this is in the V R two zone, and they are not at they're not reaching capacity, they're not reaching the density that's provided in the regulations for the zone. So we can't just change that. Whether anybody likes or doesn't like, it doesn't really matter. It is in the V R two zone. It it's zone for greater density. And if people didn't like that, it had to be changed before they bought the property and this application was brought to us.
Can we vote now?
So I'm satisfied that we've gone through by elimination all the things that were in the denial or captured in the motion to approve. A lot of them, Mark, that was yours.
Also, I'll make a motion that we approve application fifty-two dash twenty-one S P and fifty-three dash twenty-one C, North Main Street, North Main Kent L C zero North Main Street map three block fifteen lot five conservation development of thirteen lots.
Sorry, okay, so now we're in discussion. I think I need to change that. Because it's not thirteen lots now. I'm going to change lots to units.
Okay.
Correct, thirteen units, that's right.
Okay.
So if the resolution.
I'll amend my motion to be thirteen units.
So if we discuss, if we, if this goes to vote and it fails, then I assume we do the same with the resolution of denial.
No.
No.
If we go and it's not approved, it's denied.
By default.
By default, so we don't have to go any further. It hasn't been denied, but it wasn't approved.
Okay, we need a second. Thank you.
So is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would call a vote. All in favor, sign the thought by raising your hand.
So we've got, just to make sure, we've got Wes, Adam, Mark, David, and Alice voting in affirmative. And then Darrell and Karen voting nay. Am I right?
Correct. Now, I'll state my reason. I think once there's any homes in this parcel, it no longer functions as a meaningful northern gateway, and there's a much more effective and meaningful corridor all the way from Kent Falls to Avian Preserve to the D E P Wildlife Management Corridor, the whole stretch to this parcel is essentially a northern gateway. So whether or not three homes are eliminated or shifted, I think makes very little difference. Not in favor of reducing the density and not in favor of interrupting the lower meadow, which I think functions as a better wildlife corridor without homes.
Thanks, Darrell. Karen, did you want to give your reasons for voting no, please?
I think it's pretty clear, my position on it. I feel that there's not enough open space. And in particular, under the special permit language that the arrangement of buildings and structures and the uses there block the view shed and destroy the rural character of what's known as the Husatonic Meadow. And I think I further think it's a mistake, but I'm outvoted.
I'll add one more thing, because Karen brought up a good point. I think the language not block the view shed of the open fields is very vague. They're no longer open fields, and in the future, if they come back and amend it per our comments here, who's going to determine what doesn't block the view shed, what remains of it?
Okay.
Thank you all. This has been a long process. So moving on to five B two. Clarifications on the baseline of operations and aspirations of.
There's more?
Now there's more.
Okay, so at the last meeting, I had said that David actually was not happy with the attorney that he had hired. He wasn't able to make the meeting, and what I did was I put a question out on the list serve asking for some recommendations of other definitions, and I got back three or four recommendations. This seemed to be the best. This is Adam. And on, if you look at the ones I kind of put a little squiggly next to, there's the camping unit, and then there's the recreational camp. And then also attached to that is the the regulation that they actually have in place. So I don't know how you want to move forward. Do you want to just start talking right now? David's here with the two definitions of a camping unit and a recreational camp? And see which ones you guys think would be the best fit? Not the best fit, ask me to go in another direction? It's a, you know, I guess, you know, both David and I are looking for some feedback.
So Donna, these are definitions now?
Yes.
You propose to add to the the regulations?
Well, one or the other, or a combination of the both, or if you don't like them, then I'll see if I can find others, maybe from Massachusetts, but this is what we were able to get from from Haddon around in this area, in Connecticut at least.
Can we, maybe David can chime in, because he knows his business better than we do, and he can tell us if if one of these definitions works for him, or something would have to be changed or added to.
It's fine with me.
Hi, David Schreiber. So, so I did, going through this, what, I think there's pieces on all of this that could create a, that fits within our business unit and what we're doing, and based on what I, the statement of use that I had sent in the meeting back in September. And that would fit almost everything. There are pieces of that that I would like to re amend and then submit over back to the board, back to the commission, and see that, you know, if I could sit down with a lawyer who have a different one now, that we could go through this and really kind of hand it to you and what I would propose based on this. Now that I know what you're looking for, for a while, for the last two months, I've been coming to Donna, and I'm like, I'm not exactly sure what we're trying to accomplish. But now Donna explained it to me greatly that if I could take some of these and put this together and really come down with this mission that we could discuss.
I honestly think that the best thing that could happen, I mean, you should submit to us a definition that that works for you, that as a commission we can look at, and if we need to modify it or change it in some way, but but we should start with something that that you've looked at with your attorney and have designed to incorporate what your business does and what you want it to do. Going forward.
So David, that sounds like a plan. Can you do that for next meeting?
Yes, I will, I will, I will get that going for next meeting.
Where are these regulations from?
Adam.
I'm sorry?
Adam.
Okay.
Someone had said Litchfield might have one, but they had just changed their regulations, and it was gone. So, you know, and then, then, once we get a definition, then we can actually create the regulation similar to the way that we did the brewery, where we put in the restrictions, because you're not going to want this to be everywhere in the rural district. You're going to want to be able to say, you know, it's got to have two hundred acres, you know, it's got to have this much road front, whatever. So then you would fine tune it for the actual regulation, and then we can put both in in the regulations, the definition and the regulation, so. So if that's what we're going to do, we can, someone can move the table to January thirteenth.
They're moved.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging out, David.
Thank you.
All right, we'll talk to you soon.
Bye bye.
Okay. Um, so next we have.
Six B one, election of officers and discussion of open alternate position. So I spoke with Adam, and I would like to nominate, he concur that I'd like to nominate him as vice chair. Do I hear any of the nominations?
Second for Adam.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. It's like it's unanimous.
And can I make a nomination for an alternate? There's a guy who knows our regulations pretty well. Matt Winters would be a great alternate.
I'll second that.
Terrific. So all in favor of that, say aye. Raise your hand. All right. So then Donna, that recommendation will go to the Board of Selectmen, is that correct?
Right, I'll put together a memo. Joyce was aware that this might be happening tonight, and I will get the memo out and see if we can get it, if Joyce can add it to the agenda for the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday night's meeting. I think it starts at six thirty.
That's this Tuesday, tomorrow?
It's coming.
No, not tomorrow. I'm sorry, next week.
On the fourteenth.
Yeah, correct. All right, six B two, review and approval of bylaws. This is a, this is a good exercise, I think, every year to to go through this.
So this, yeah, every year where we are required every year to go through our bylaws. There was one suggestion that that the chairperson can delegate. The chairperson shall preside at all meetings and hearings. The commission shall have duties normally conferred. The chairperson can delegate those responsibilities to a seated member or alternate. I believe that's the new wording that I someone had suggested that it go in. Yes, that's it. So.
You have it highlighted in red.
Okay, yeah. Mine is just black and white, so.
You also added references to Zoom meetings.
Right, I changed that as well, because honestly, I think Zoom is here to stay. On, so just kind of clearing that up and making it a little bit more or Zoom, so that we're not in violation of the bylaws, but that was the only change.
That just suggests that you replace Zoom with like online web conference, just in case
Okay.
Something happens to Zoom, like the Xerox machine in the Kleenex.
And Kodak. Kodak moment.
And what did you say, David? Online?
Online teleconference. Everyone will know what that is. You'll notice we're not all in a MySpace call right now, so.
Right, but that's just like Zoom, right? MySpace?
There.
Isn't that Facebook or something?
It's a joke, yes. Nobody's using MySpace anymore. We don't want to Zoom in our bylaws is all I'm trying to say.
I'm a grandma. What do I know? Okay, so online teleconference, okay. Yeah, so if everybody is okay with that, then I just need a motion, and then I will file the new bylaws.
I'll propose move that we adopt the bylaws as proposed and amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Donna.
Hey, now we've got the food truck thing again, and my recommendation is that hopefully January will be quieter, and we can have at least some sort of conversation that's not going to be so rushed. So my recommendation is that we table this and move on.
I make that motion that we table it.
Second. Third.
Player. So table.
So who tabled it? I'm sorry.
I did, Adam.
Adam with Mark. Okay. Um. With regard to six B four, I never got any more additional information. I did send them an email and told them what you guys had decided. I haven't heard from them, so my recommendation is that you remove it from the agenda.
I'll make that motion that we remove it from the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Motion, Karen.
Okay. And then we're up to sixty-five, which was the add to the agenda, and I think David can take the lead on this, because I'm not sure.
Yeah, the Affordable Subcommittee, Affordable Housing Subcommittee asked for one additional P and Z member. And since Alice had expressed interest, I suggested that we nominate her. She already came to the meeting Tuesday. As a member of the public, we should make her official vote here.
So that's David's motion. Do you have your second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thanks, Alice. Okay, thanks, Alice.
You're allowed to vote for yourself. I did.
Um, okay, 7A. I just want you guys to know, I don't know who reads the, the newsletter that goes out, but there's going to be an FOI meeting on January 5th. It's going to be given by Tom Hennig, who works for the FOIC Commission, FOI Commission. And Randy Di Bella is the town's attorney. He will be there as well. So you might want to just mark your calendar that it will be at seven o'clock on January 5th. And the link to the Zoom meeting will be posted on the town's website as we get closer to the January 5th meeting. It's not a requirement, but you know what? There's been so many changes that maybe it's a good idea for everyone. If you have time and the inclination to attend.
You send that out in an email just so we can get it on calendars?
Um, I can do that.
That'd be lovely.
Okay.
Thanks, Donna.
Okay. Um, and then we just have a just make sure I'm that's right. The POCD meeting, okay. Um, now we just have the update from the P O C D Subcommittee. Oh, that's what I need to talk about. Okay.
Well, we, we, we had a meeting with Glenn last Thursday night. On, he had provided to us in advance of the meeting to sort of draft chapters for the P O C D. One dealing with sustainability and resilience and the other dealing with environmental protection. All of the committee members have reviewed those chapters very carefully in advance. We have a very spirited discussion about them and things are proceeding along well. Our next meeting is in January where Glenn promised to have two more chapters. And I think we're moving along in reasonable pace. Apparently we have until the end of next year to finish the P O C D. My hope is we'll do it far before that, but I think we're, we're in good shape.
And one of the things, I did get an email from Glenn later on, later this afternoon, that he had originally, we had originally scheduled the meeting for January 20th. That's no longer good for him. He said he's now looking at the 6th, which is a little snug on timing, but he thinks he can do it. He recommends the 13th. I don't think so. That's our regular meeting. I, I think two hours was kind of a nice, soft, gentle discussion. We didn't, I didn't think that we felt rushed. So we would have to start at five in order to make the seven o'clock meeting. So I wouldn't recommend the 13th. The next date would be January 27th or Thursday, February 3rd. So for those of you on that Subcommittee, just, you know, if you want to pick a date and then I will let him know tomorrow via email.
27th is good for me and I'd rather do it sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Works for me.
It also works for me.
That was December 20, well, any of them worked for me.
January, January.
January 20th, yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, I will let him know.
I also would say, he seems to be doing a great job. I mean, he's spoken with a lot of the officers in the town and a lot of the other commissions in the town. He's really made himself fully aware of what's going on in Kent. I, I think he was a great choice and I think he's doing a good job.
I think there's something to be said about using the same person. He helped us rewrite the regulations and like you said, he know, he knows our town at this point.
Yep.
He knows the direction we want to go in, so to work with him on the P O C D really has been great, as you said.
Um, can I request going back to 7A to the staff report section? I forgot to include this. Um, basically, we're going to be starting the budget process. Fun time of the year. And I did get a, a capital budget worksheet that needs to be returned to the treasurer by January 7. Um. We have now $54,103. I don't know where that three came from, but I'm not a treasurer, so to do the zoning regulations that we're able to tap into at this point in time. But because we're not working on our zoning regulations, I'd like your permission to see if I can't figure out or talk to Barbara about maybe pushing this back a year. And once the P O C D is done, you guys, because I won't be here, will be working, see if you can't hire Glenn to rewrite the subdivision regulations that have not been rewritten like in forever. So that would be the next project. I recommend that will need to be done. The zoning regs will be updated based on all of the new public acts that have come into play. Next month, we're going to be talking about the affordable housing, not affordable housing, accessory dwelling units. That's a whole nother topic that, you know, we, we can get into, but I don't see anything that would need to be done in fiscal year 2028 unless you guys have a crystal ball. If you want to put money in there to do a rewrite of the zoning regulations at that point in time, it's up to you guys. You, you guys kind of have to figure that out. You know, I, I think the year before what did the year before? Probably two years ago. On, we had put in 15 in one year and 15 in another as a projected rewrite of the zoning regulations. I mean, I can throw it in there if you think you're going to be doing that in five years from now.
So Donna, will we see this for the next meeting? Is, is that what you're going to do is to submit a budget?
Well, this is just for the capital. I haven't gotten the budget documentation yet. We usually get the budget requests for capital on, at least in November. But it didn't happen that way this year. So I'm pressed for time. I didn't get this until last night via email. And I didn't want to wait an extra month because then I would be past the return date of January 7.
Right, so I think that makes a lot of sense to put money in for next year on the subdivision rewrite.
I'll see, because it's been totally funded. We have $54,000 that's been funded already. If we can move it out until the end of, you know, the end of next year or next year's, at least into the fiscal fiscal '22, '23 budget, then you can work with Glenn on rewriting the subdivision regs. So I'll work on that, but is there any other money you want to add into fiscal year 2028, '29, '30, or '31? Do you want me to put $15,000 in, in '29 and 15 and $25,030? So that, you know, you at least have some money in, in the capital plan to rewrite the zoning regs. If you think you're going to want to do it at that point in time. At least it's there.
Sounds like a great idea.
All right. All right, so I will put into 2029, I'll put $15,000 and then 2030. I'll put in another 30 so that you'll have $45,000 to rewrite the zoning regulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Okay, now we can go back to nine.
I think we're 9A now, right?
Yes. Um. I only had two permits this month, believe it or not. But for the building department, we processed over 60, which is unheard of because we usually only do about 30 or 32. So the building department's been swamped. Um, I usually have the monthly, the monthly financials, but I didn't get them this month. So that's why you don't have anything. The Connecticut Federation. Um, was that, did I include, I didn't include that, right? That was probably from last month. Um, and then there's this, the warning from Sherman. Statutorily, anytime there's a change to either a regulation or zone that abuts another town, that town has to be notified of a change to the zoning regulations. And basically Sherman is following the statutory requirement and letting us know what the changes are going to be to, the proposed change is going to be to their regulation. They asked for feedback. You don't need to give it. I can definitely send Christine an email, tell her that you reviewed it and you have no comments unless you do.
So we've been forewarned, no comments?
Yes, that's basically what it is, so.
And they're, they're banning marijuana retail and production.
Exactly, because they had a mor, it seems to me that when I read it, after reading this, they had a moratorium and then they've stopped the moratorium and they've made a decision to ban it.
Right. Good for them.
Okay, all right, so no comments? Okay, I'll send it to Christine tomorrow, an email and just let her know. Um, and then the other item that we got.
From ARPA.
Yeah.
It was really informational only.
That's kind of what I thought until I read the last bolded sentence. I'm like, I'm guessing that if anybody has comments, thoughts, or observations, they can actually contact Connie or another member of, of ARPA and, and speak directly to them.
Well, they also sent out a postcard as well.
Yeah, that's for the survey, which I did take. And just quick, I don't know, maybe, maybe 10 minutes, maybe. Depending on if you had any extra comments. So. Um, so there's that. And I don't have really any other additional information on either of the lawsuits. So I don't see any reason to go into executive session at this point in time. And I'll just parry through the regular motions to follow the direction and advice of the Planning and Zoning Commission's attorney.
Great, so I guess we've reached adjournment.
We have.
Motion. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move we adjourn. Yeah, yeah.
Adam.
Thanks, guys.
So all done. Thank you. Good job.
Great holiday, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Stay safe.
Thanks.